Rocket School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, October 8th, 2025 is now called to order at 7:00 PM. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Bourget.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke is absent this evening. Mrs. Kepiscus?
Here.
Mrs. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Leclerc.
Here.
Please stand with me for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we'll go into good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee during good and welfare, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Estelle Bubble, 648 Third Avenue, Wensocket, Rhode Island. I am here today to give some suggestions. I know way back, a good principal and all that in the schools that I've known very well, and we all know, George Masuri. When he came to the elementary schools in Fairmont, he had the kids line up outside to their classes and then when the bell rang, and then he would come and join them, give them a little, you know, talk, whatever, how their day, how their day is going to go. And then the teachers came out and picked up the students and walked them into the class. He also did a great thing, no matter what school he's going to, with them walking around the schoolyard. Then if they passed him or one of the teachers, he would mark it down and give them a little shoe, you know, like on a printer for your, and it was on paper, and they could put that on their lanyard or whatever, to how many miles they walked. That being said, the thing is, is that they had respect. These kids need to go back to that. I suggest that somebody be at the doors, either have the elementary line up or whatever, and then the high schools or whatever, be somebody at the doors, and, and, you know, watch how they come in, take their hat off. That was the biggest thing ever, taking the hats off, because it gave them a transition. Take my hat off at school, because I'm going into school. Where at home, if they wear it on their head, you know, it's, it's common. Well, that's fine, but you've got to break that, that lifestyle. So I am suggesting that, and if you need help, I was talking to my daughter about it, and she goes, Mom, you're absolutely right. They need that transition. So hopefully, we can go back to that. And you know, when you set the rules, the rules apply. Not giving a second chance, whatever. These are the rules, you abide by the rules, or then you get reprimanded, whether they go home, or suspension, or whatever. But you need to go and set the rules, and every school has to go by that. This is not, this is not a joke anymore. And like, I was, I was just devastated when I heard about the last time that a parent was driving their kids to Dunn Park to go fight. Now, we'd never had that, ever. But because, and I don't care if the parents come up here and complain because, oh, well, you're breaking, and you're breaking the rules. You know what? Whatever. And they need the dress code. We always had a dress code. It didn't mean colors, but we tried that. But you have to stick to your plan that you have. These are the rules. This is what happens. Now, my daughters, I don't remember how they got into this, but when my daughter was in the, I think it was junior high, because of course she was in the old school. Well, they ended up taking a trip to the prisons. That woke up a lot of kids. They, and she, she says it till this day. You've got to give them what's going to happen. They don't see it, they don't hear it. This is why I'm here tonight, and I'm sorry about what happened at one of the schools with the BB gun, but like I said, if they were lined up and all that. So I know, I talked to a good friend there as you, tonight, and if you need my help, I am more than happy to help you out, because enough is enough. Our good kids are being left behind, and that's not good. Have a blessed night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Evelyn Ross. I'm a seventh grader at.
Please speak into the mic, lift it up. There we go.
I'm here to talk about the dress code. Last year, I was wearing a three-finger striped tank top at gym, and so were all of the boys. I assumed that since the boys also had tank tops on, I could wear one as well. The gym teacher dress coded only me, saying that it was different for me. This year, I was wearing an off-the-shoulder top, and my teacher stopped in the middle of our conversation just to tell me, cover your shoulders. Dress codes are held to a double standard. Girls are taught from an early age that if they show too much skin, they are dressing for the male gaze. Dress codes emphasize this. Historically, dress codes have been used to oppress women. We couldn't show our ankles, we couldn't wear pants, and still, in many countries today, women can't go out without their heads covered. And no, I'm not saying there shouldn't be a dress code at all. I just want you to review the dress code and see if it discriminates women. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Moylan, 151 Elmore Avenue, Wensocket. I'm not here to complain, I am here to say thank you for addressing the bathroom situation. I also am looking forward to working with you to come up with a solution to address the vandalism in this, in the restrooms. When you called after on Mr. Ward's program, I definitely didn't know that we had spent over $100,000 to rectify the situation. So I'm definitely looking forward to assisting. I plan on joining the PTO at Villa next Thursday, the 16th, from 5:00 to 6:00. Just some, several suggestions that I looked up, I don't know if any of these could be implemented. I know we do have the E-Hall pass. I was wondering if any of the teachers would be willing to volunteer after a specific period, you know, if each, each period, a teacher could go into the bathroom. Just do a simple check, like, open the door, make sure that all the toilets don't have stuff clogging them, make sure that the bathroom just looks tidy. If it doesn't, maybe they can lock it that then and report it to the janitor or the administration, so that way it can be addressed. And then that way, we can narrow down to see which students were out on an E-Hall pass. You know, if we check the first period, it's fine, and then second period, there is an issue, we can go back and look to see who, which students had an E-Hall pass at that time. Another suggestion that I had found was a Halo smart sensor. These are about $1,600 per unit, which could be a little bit costly. I know that you might be able to negotiate a, a larger volume to get a discounted price. They detect vape aerosols, THC aggression, and sound anomalies like banging and shouting. If we did install these, they could be alerting the office to an issue in the bathrooms. When I had spoke with the principal, Ms. Luca, yesterday, she had explained that some of the cameras weren't working, so I don't know if we just need to address that as well to ensure that the cameras outside of the hallways in the bathrooms are also all working and in proper order. Maybe also starting a restroom respect campaign with a student-led initiative promoting dignity, privacy, and shared responsibility through posters, videos, and peer leadership. Also, maybe an anonymous reporting tool on their Chromebook, so that way if a student did go into the bathroom, notice something, they could just send a quick note to the administration. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Ian Shansky, I'm a teacher at Wensocket Middle School. I'm just here to ask that maybe the district reconsideres the policy regarding report cards and progress reports. Right now, we basically only, well, it's, it's not basically, it is, we only send out report cards and progress reports digitally on Skyward. I just think we have a kind of a big misunderstanding of how our families interact with technology. I call countless parents, you know, every single quarter, and I, you know, inform them, like, hey, did you know your child is behind or missing assignments or is failing classes? And so countless parents tell me they had no idea that their child was failing. I created like a, like a survey, and I just asked my students, you know, how do your families use technology? And 35% of all the students I surveyed said they don't even have a personal computer, desktop, or laptop at home. Many of their families just exclusively have a cellphone or a tablet. And Skyward is not a particularly user-friendly program, especially on a phone or a tablet. And as far as I can tell, I could be wrong, I've played around with it quite a bit, it's only available in English. I'd be, if, if I'm incorrect on that, I'd be great. So, you know, if you don't know what all these symbols means, if you don't know how to navigate it, it's, it's, it would be almost impossible to use it to decipher what's going on if, if you're not a native English speaker. And it's just, a lot of our families' email is not important to them. They don't, they're not professionals, or I shouldn't say they're not professionals, but they're not using email like the way we do, where we, where it's in our routine to check our email multiple times a day. They'll go weeks without checking emails. And it's nothing against them, it's just not part of their routine. And I really think we should revisit going back to paper report cards. Every single red staff member or teacher I've talked to thinks we should go back to paper report cards with a sign and bring this back, showing that your parents have seen it. Well, of course, some kids are just going to forge a signature or whatever, but right now, it seems very few of our parents are actually getting the report cards through Skyward. And that's not to say like they're not invested in their children, it's just that they just don't use technology the way we do. And they just have a tremendous difficulty, or sorry, there's a tremendous lack of understanding that they need to be checking Skyward, or they may not, they may not be able to. I know some students have told me that Skyward just doesn't even work on their parents' phone, and they've asked me for a paper report card. So I just hope we can maybe revisit it, going back to paper with like a sign, bring it back here, bring it back to your teacher. You know, it really wouldn't be that expensive. I mean, well, we have 6,000 students, a box of papers, 5,000 sheets of paper, 60 bucks, maybe $500 a year in paper costs to go back to printed report cards and progress reports. I just think kind of going back old school in this way and, you know, sending a physical thing home that kids have to show their parents would be a net benefit. Because like I said, my impromptu survey shows a lot of our parents just do not check email, do not use the computer, do not use Skyward in the way that we unfortunately would hope they would. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I'm getting it. Robert Stewart, 68 Cumberland here in Wensocket. I'm the president of Wensocket Teachers Guild. On Monday, September 22nd, Wensocket High School suffered terrible violence, and most, if not all of us here, heard about the fights and the students suspended. On Tuesday, September 23rd, what would have happened in the past is the staff would have known, we're going to show up at all-staff CPT. We're going to hear what the facts are, we're going to quell the rumors, fears, we're going to bond the staff together. We did that for years, and it was very successful. We call them all-staff CPT meetings. There's four a week, Monday through Thursday, so that's roughly 16 a month, sometimes more, and sometimes less. And the teachers were asking the district to please use at least two of these 16 meetings, these 16 CPTs, to address safety. Staff hears facts face to face. Safety concerns are addressed, and staff feel safer, they feel respected and part of the solution. I've repeatedly asked Dr. McGee and Principal Ernest to reinstitute the all-staff CPTs. Last year, I was told we could not, we cannot, we cannot do the, the all-staff CPTs because the auditorium was under construction. We suggested the library, because sometimes we brought the entire staff there. This year, the auditorium is complete. In this past week, Dr. McGee and Mr. Ernest confirmed that they do not intend to utilize the all-staff CPT time to discuss safety issues. So to communicate issues, we send email, we can use Google meets, we can ask for voluntary standing 10 meetings after school. But collaboration, it's a conversation, and it's much more effective done in person. And safety issues are ruled throughout this district, I know you know that. There are so many ways we could enhance safety. For example, we could remove the phones, utilize Yonder or some other system that's working in other, around school districts. Reduce class sizes, install metal detectors, more paraprofessionals, behavior interventionists, social workers, hall monitors. Make sure that the cafeteria, front entrance, rear entrance have a sufficient adult coverage. Student IDs on lanyards, rehire the administrator we lost last year, an additional degree of discipline. We could go on and on about measures that would make us safer. But you may have noticed that all these things cost money. And we know the district is underfunded, that your hands are tied. The cost of implementing all-staff CPT is astounding. It costs nothing. No additional money, the 7:15 to 7:45 time, it's already in the schedule. We had a professional development day this past Monday, and Mr. Ernest brought everybody together in the auditorium in person, and opened the last 30 minutes to questions. And one teacher explained how students are, some students are gaining the tardy kiosk. They get a little slip, and some of them figure out how to hide, walk, avoid going to class, and then go back to the tardy kiosk, get an additional slip to, just with a different time. And Mr. Ernest, he gave a straightforward answer, he said, he was unaware students were doing this. I don't blame them. How would he possibly know about all the safety concerns in the school? But that's what the all-staff CPT does. It collaboratively, collaboratively brings over 100 staff members together to think through problems, and that doesn't happen if you don't meet together in person and talk. We've seen, we've seen Google meets where someone's trying to communicate remotely. It's, yeah, it's, I can't even go there. I think I heard that Mr. Ernest is the person to make the call on the all-staff CPTs. But I think safety is so basic, so essential, that the superintendent has the authority here and the responsibility to make the school safe. It's not micromanaging, it's listening to the professionals you work with. I've known you for a long time, Dr. McGee. You're a well-meaning person. You want to see the students and the schools do well. All it would take is for you to say the word. The decision not to talk to the teachers during all-staff CPT, it doesn't make sense to us. It does not make us safer. Please reconsider, thank you.
Thank you.
David Andrews, Wensocket High School Social Studies teacher, Wensocket Teachers Guild Vice President for Wensocket High School and Wensocket Area Career and Technical Center, 68 Cumberland Ave., Wensocket. Safety and security at Wensocket High School continue to be challenging, also because of attendance issues and tardiness. The building administration team is trialing a raffle system in order to reward students for getting to school on time. Hopefully, this may reduce tardiness. Also, today, shortly after the bell for advisory rang, a hallway check was called to clear tardy students from the halls. There have been more kids lingering in the halls during advisory time. And fortunately, you know, Mr. Ernest called this one right after the bell went off. These students were kept in the auditorium for a short time and then sent back to advisory. Both efforts are positive. We hope that students will buy into the raffle and report to school and to their classes on time. Time will tell if it has a positive effect on reducing tardiness. Hallway checks can be effective, but need to be called within a couple of minutes after the bell rings in order to be truly effective. They also need to be called more frequently and at random times, in random periods during the day, so students are aware that they should be reporting to all of their classes immediately. After students return to their class, or to, will return to advisory today, unfortunately, some of them were again hanging out in the stairwells in the halls and so forth. What will definitely make the hallways, stairwells, and cafeterias safer are more administrators, teachers, and staff patrolling the school, and when necessary, police officers. Lunchroom and cafeteria coverage is still understaffed. In order to keep the lunchroom, cafeteria, and surrounding areas safe and orderly, at least seven staff need to be present. Four in the hallway, going into the cafeteria and lunchroom, and three in the lunchroom itself. Currently, there are supposed to be five teachers on duty, three to four will stay in the hallway area, and one will patrol inside the lunchroom. The problem is that these staff are frequently pulled from this duty in order to cover classes. For instance, today, instead of having five teachers on duty, there were only two, as three got called to, actually, two got called to cover classes, one was absent. So two teachers were responsible for covering three exits, the boys' and girls' lavatories, and the lunchroom. Deans and administrators are frequently called to readmit students, escort students out of class, take care of other tasks, leaving the cafeteria and the lunchroom understaffed. Monday, this past Monday, administrators were in a meeting during the lunch periods, which, again, left us kind of short-staffed. Today, I did this duty with one other teacher. Administrators and deans came by when they could, but were only able to stay for a few minutes at a time. At one point, I noticed too many boys were in the bathroom, so I went in to clear them out. Now, bear in mind, when I leave the door, what we're trying to do is make sure that the kids stay in the lunchroom, and kids will often try to leave. So when I leave that door, that door is unattended. So we had two unattended doors while I was in the bathroom to clear out the bathroom. There are only supposed to be two students allowed in each bathroom at a time. When I went in, there were seven. The bathroom reeked of marijuana, and there were four boys in the bathroom stall presumably smoking. It's impossible to watch three exits and monitor two bathrooms all at once. The one female teacher on this duty is frequently called to do coverage, so there is no way that anyone can go in and check the girls' lab. Having the halls and cafeteria properly staffed is a proactive way to prevent disorder, fights, and injury. I bring up these issues because we need to constantly and consistently address safety and security in our schools. It is an ongoing job, and we owe it to our students to better ensure their success. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll go into the consent agenda. We have no recognitions and announcements, and the minutes will be approved at the next meeting. So I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does anyone want to take any item out of order and discuss any particular item? Mrs. Kepiscus?
I did have one question about the homeschooling request, but I noticed Dr. Holt is not here, and I don't know if somebody else could answer it. It listed for a second-grade student being pulled out to be homeschooled that the program being used is various resources. It's not really a program, it sounds like they're developing their own curriculum, and I don't know. I'm just concerned, let's put it that way. I'm just concerned that there is no curriculum that's being reviewed. And I realize when people, because we went through this in policy for a very, very long time, discussing the homeschooling policy, that there's absolute discretion with regard to homeschooling parents as to the curriculum that's used, but I believe they are required to use a curriculum. And that's my only concern, that it doesn't reference a curriculum, it just says various resources, which could be anything.
Yeah, I, I don't know, Dr. Holt's not here this evening, but I can get an answer for you.
Thank you, I just would appreciate knowing what that means. And I know that once they leave the district, we're not responsible for them anymore, until they come back. And then when they come back, we've relied on the fact that they're using Delacorte or, or Khan Academy or whatever it is, various resources, doesn't tell me anything. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, the last Natalie and Fatima to give us their report.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Again, I'm Fatima, I'm from Wensocket High School, and this is Natalie. First, I'd like to start off with the school-wide stuff that's been happening and going on. Last Friday was our first Pink Out Friday for the month. It is a very important and meaningful event for our school, as students and staff come together to show support for breast cancer awareness. And this tradition has not only built school spirit, but also reminds us of the importance of standing united for a cause that impacts so many lives. So many people came out. I don't believe I had a picture on here, but I did take some, I'll probably add it into the next report. A lot of people came out, we were all wearing pink, just being supportive, very happy. It was just a big success. Secondly, we had a college fair also going on. There was many schools from New England around. They came, spoke to us seniors, also juniors, there were a couple in there. We just got a lot of information that a lot of people didn't know, and I thought it was really good, and I feel like we should have more of those constantly going on, just for the information to be coming out there, because a lot of people just don't know. And then, we also had middle school classes coming in to the vocational school. They came in and we just showed them like what all the classes are about. For instance, I'm in biotechnology, well biomedical now, and we just brought the students back, we had lab stuff out, we had telescopes, I mean, microscopes, sorry. We had microscopes, we had samples of DNA, just different things going on for them to see what it's like and for them to join whatever program they want to. But yeah, that was really good, and we also have an open house coming up November 6th, so I'm not sure if you guys are going to be there, but it'll be, we'll be, we'll be happy to have you guys there and just see everything going on. And then, another, another big thing that's like pretty big, the seniors got their FAFSA done, we started our applications. It was pretty, it was pretty smooth, we had a whole like FAFSA day going on, and then we have a FAFSA night coming up pretty soon, I don't know the exact date, but we'll be having people in the library and just figuring out stuff together with their families.
Hi, everyone, I'm Natalie, and I'm just going to be explaining the sports and clubs. The student council has been working on our homecoming dance and putting together a spirit week for homecoming. The theme is "Under the Bayou" from Princess and the Frog. And then the debate team had a successful virtual competition. Fall sports have been putting in their hard work at games and practices and are coming to an end in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions for our student representatives? Great job, thank you. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file our report, the report from our student representatives, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dr. McGee, your report, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, so personnel matters. Currently, we have six teaching positions that are unfilled. We have one secretary position and 14 paraprofessional positions which are unfilled. So we're getting closer to the, to the zero. We've been working really hard to try to fill all of these positions. It's challenging, as you're aware, but we're continuing to, to, to look for applicants and interview applicants and, and fill as many of them as quickly as we can. Happy to answer any questions you might have at this time. Happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Questions or comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll go into the subcommittee reports. Mrs. Kepiscus, would you give us the CILAC report?
Be happy to. Short foot suite. CILAC meeting.
Would you speak into the mic, please?
Apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
CILAC meeting was scheduled for October 2nd, 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's virtual as usual. There were seven people there. All of them were staff members excluding me and my daughter, but she is a staff member now. We opened the meeting at 6:00. No additional people showed up. No parents showed up. At 6:06, I ended the meeting. Sadly, it's become evident to me as chair of the CILAC that unfortunately, our parents, guardians, and families apparently prefer to reach out to the press and on social media to register complaints about Wunsaket Education Department rather than to reach out to those who can actually affect change. More often than not, they elect not to attend the many parent engagement opportunities the district offers so that they can be part of the solution. If nothing else, the school committee and CILAC both meet at least once per month, where parents, guardians, and families, especially those with children with special needs, have the opportunity to speak to those who could actually affect some change around the issues about which they complain. As I tell parents from the district who reach out to me as the chairperson of the CILAC, you are always your child's best advocate. It is your most difficult job and also your most important one, as no one, no one, can or should care more about your child than you do. While we have many educators, paraprofessionals, and educational leaders in the school department who step into that void and advocate for your children every single day, please remember, they are never supposed to replace your parenting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. You know, it's very disturbing to keep hearing almost every month that we have no parents attending. And I'm going to paraphrase what I said on radio. It's a real crying shame that we don't have attendance by the parents. My granddaughter is the CILAC chair in Smithfield. She has a heck of a time trying to get together with the superintendent, the principals, and the special ed director. It's very difficult. It's like she climbs Everest every single month to try to get meetings and try to get people involved. Here in Wunsaket, it's a smorgasbord of people who help. All the people that you need to speak to, parents, are at the Zoom meeting. You've got the superintendent. You've got the you've got the school committee, our CILAC chair. You have directors. They're all there waiting for you to assist you and to give you advice or to meet with you. I wish you would take the opportunity to attend the Zoom meetings, because we've made it easier. Instead of having to get out of your home, bring your child if you have to, and then come to a meeting, we're allowing you to do this at home through Zoom. So again, I encourage parents to really take advantage of the monthly meetings.
And if I may add to their credit, the directors, the superintendent, all the people that attend the CILAC meeting that could actually help affect some change that you're looking for have attended those meetings long before I was in this seat, lest you think that's why they're there. They attended for the many, many years before I was in this seat, at least 12, when I was in those seats, and they still attended CILAC meetings. We are very lucky in the district that we have at least one of the special education leaders and the superintendent at virtually every single CILAC meeting we have. We're very lucky. Take advantage of that before you lose it.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any other comments? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CILAC report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Kepiscus, you're so kind to give us the policy update, because I know you took copious notes at our meeting.
I usually do, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The meeting was called to order at 4:05. There were no meetings to approve because we hadn't presented. The first item on our agenda was an attendance policy and a potential retention policy. As a result of guidance issued by RIDE around chronic absences as a factor in making retention decisions, the decision was made to review and possibly amend our current attendance policy to reflect RIDE's directive. The policy is currently drafted as directed mainly at students in primary education, the elementary grades, as that's where RIDE's focus is, and create a notification system for families so that if their students are significantly off track in terms of attendance, there were certain benchmarks that are met with regard to absences. You are notified sooner rather than later. RIDE believes this notification will act as a call to action for families to get their children to school so as to set up good attendance habits as our students progress through secondary education, the middle school and the high school. Our secondary students progress from grade to grade based in large part on earning credits as opposed to spending one academic year at which academic level. So the policy might need to address this distinction. As part of this consideration, the subcommittee will also work on developing and passing for the full school committee review of retention policy, which will identify the factors for consideration in making decisions whether a student should be retained or rather than promoted, a team process by which that decision is made, and any appeal process that would be made available as a result of the decision. It was noted that the RIDE guidance and our draft policy make it clear that chronic absenteeism is a factor in the retention decision, but the decision to retain a student cannot be based solely on chronic absences. Other factors include academic performance, which must be considered meaning according to RIDE, state standardized tests such as the RIDE test, but of course, we're a year behind with those scores, and it makes no reference to the DLM for alternate assessment students or the SATs that our juniors take, but may also consider other performance tests and grades. Retention policy will provide for decisions to be made on a case-by-case basis, which is a holistic approach. This is especially important consideration for our students with IEPs and our MLL students who have other factors which may impact both attendance and academic performance. It was also discussed at length that RIDE's guidance makes no distinction at all between excused absence and unexcused absence, as all absences are simply reported to RIDE as absence. The subcommittee continues to discuss whether this distinction should be considered in making retention decisions, with particular concern for students who may have, for example, medical issues which give rise to significant absences. The draft attendance policy retains this distinction in its draft form as perhaps this is the area where the team making decision will consider the nature of the absences. The subcommittee asked council if she could provide some data for our next meeting to address how other districts are addressing this need for an attendance policy with particular focus on urban treatment versus suburban treatment. As a result, the subcommittee chose to hold this policy for further discussion with regard to the raised issues and with the intent that we discuss a draft retention policy at our next meeting as well. Council advises she anticipates having a retention policy ready for review and discussion at her November meeting. Sorry, that was long and run up, but was really detailed. Second was student-teacher intern policy. Having passed our policy with the last academic year, we learned that the AG's office will not run a national BCI on our student teachers and interns because they are not paid. Therefore, we must amend our student and intern student-teacher and intern policy to reflect that an acceptable BCI is now required as opposed to a national BCI. The decision was made that the policy is amended to reflect the state BCI will be sent to the full school committee for a vote at its October 22nd meeting. Only one vote should be required, as it is an amendment and not a new policy. Council then provided us for item number three, an audit of the WED policies for compliance with state law and regulations. Council has undertaken a full review of state laws and regulations and our existing policies to make sure we are fully compliant, that is, we have all the required policies and our policies are in compliance with existing statutes and regulations. As a result, council would like to add to our subcommittee's already quite lengthy to-do list the following. A policy which addresses penalties for drug, alcohol, and weapons offenses. This may be done as an amendment to our current student discipline policy. A drug-free school policy which applies to all students and staff. The subcommittee indicated that it believed we did have such a policy, P2-18, but it may have been rescinded in error. However, it may still exist but simply not be reflected in the online policy manual. This omission from the website will be further discussed internally at McPhee to see if it was deleted in error. There's a new state law which requires each district to develop a school library material policy which must be modeled on a policy issued by RIDE. To date, there is no model policy that's been released, and as a result, no district can model their policy on RIDE's policy, so everything's on hold. An employee accommodation policy was discussed, particularly with regard to accommodations as they relate to pregnancy and menopause pursuant pursuant to new state law on point. Although the WED currently has an informal procedure to address these requests, there is no written policy setting out how to start the process as an employer requesting accommodations, how those accommodation requests are to be handled, and how appeals from decisions on those requests are to be handled. Also added to this related to this to-do list were the following issues. Whether we currently have an electronic payment policy, and if we do, why it does not appear in the WED website policy manual. The career and technical center admission policy, which has been drafted and is ready for review by the subcommittee, policy would address a rolling admission model for the career and tech school, which should have been all along, but apparently was not being followed. Council has indicated we'll review the policy and have it prepared for presentation to the subcommittee at our next meeting. The next policy subcommittee meeting is on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. in the Wunsaket Middle School at Hamlet, Room 124. Policy subcommittee adjourned at 5:25, which is actually early for us.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
I have a question, Lynn, relative to the AG saying they won't they won't run NCIC on a student-teacher. What's their rationale?
Because they're not paid. The statute requires them to run to run national BCIs on staff who are paid. That's my understanding. And because our student teachers are not paid and other interns, you know, people that are doing field work for speech, occupational, and physical therapy, they're not getting paid either. That's all part of their curriculum. As a result, we can't run a national BCI on them. We can only get a state BCI. To me, it's penny pound wise and no penny wise and pound foolish. It seems to be a stupid distinction, in my opinion, especially when you read the news of late. There were two reports this week about staff in at two different schools. They were engaged in relationship with students, inappropriate relationship with students. We should at least know if that's on the horizon before we hire someone.
Agreed.
So I don't understand why they've taken this position, but that's the position they've taken. They will not run the BCIs.
So with that, there's a cost to it, I'm assuming.
I believe it's $35.
So as a in order for them to get the position, couldn't we stipulate that they need to get that done prior as a cost to them?
Prior it's not the cost. The problem is the AG is saying they don't have the statutory authority to run it.
Well, could we go to the PT in Socket?
They can't run the NCI. They can't not.
They won't do it, but.
And not by state law.
They're not going to do it. Yeah, okay.
State law determines what the AG can and cannot do. They're saying the state law does not permit it. So what we need to do is go to our legislature.
Yes.
And have them change the statute. However, is that our top priority? It should be up there, but it's not our top priority, but it should be up there, and it's something a conversation we should have when we sit down with our state reps and senators.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Thanks, Ellen. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the policy subcommittee report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Notorianni, would you give us an update on the building committee meeting that we had recently?
Would you like me to take it, Mr. Notorianni? I'm sorry, I'm just being fresh. Go ahead.
Oh, I'll throw you away, Mrs. Kepiscus.
Wow.
So the building committee met on Friday, October 3rd, at 9:30 a.m. at Hamlet Middle School. We had a presentation by Downs, which is our owners' project management team, along with DOC, which is Daniel J. O'Connell and Jonathan Levy Architects, and they walked us through the overall project and schedule in terms of what the new school construction is going to. We, and you may have already noticed, they've mobilized at Barry Field. They've already put up temporary fencing to secure some playing fields in the Briera of the location, and they've established an office that was formerly at our clubhouse. So they went through an entire presentation and then sought approval for what's called 60% CD development drawings, which a construction design development submitted to RIDE. This is the last formal submission, according to them, that basically kicks off or formally kicks off the project. They reviewed the timeline. They reviewed the building permits have been pulled, and they were in process. I did speak to Mr. Isabella, our building official, and said that we are on schedule with the city. And then we approved that submission. We approved payments to all of the vendors involved in the project. We established a subcommittee of the school building subcommittee to approve change orders and other requests might go before them that are under, I believe it's $500,000.
Correct.
So and then we we've already have a pre-established next meeting date and the meeting adjourned shortly after.
Any questions or comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the school building committee report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Mrs. Costa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Notorianni, would you give us the technology facilities update unless Mrs. Kepiscus wants to do that?
I'd rather skip that one.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as of this evening, in the technology department, there are 48 overall technology work orders, 22 are related to technology infrastructure such as laptops, printers, things of that nature, 26 are related to our data systems and state reporting. In terms of technology projects, in terms of the infrastructure, presently, the biggest project on hand, as you may recall, we received a $500,000 grant from the state matched by $500,000 from the school district to install a new communication system within the schools. This new system will have telephone, intercom, clock, and bell systems. They'll be installed at the Career Center, the High School, Hamlet, Villa, Savoy, Bothier Citizens, Harris, and McPhee. These systems will be integrated across the district over our fiber optic line and allow us to have one unified system where presently, if you want to call another school, you have to dial a certain number. You can only call the main office. This will be a totally integrated system where, in theory, a teacher can call from one room to the next, a building can call from one building to the next or into another classroom. They'll all be centrally managed. Presently, the equipment has arrived. They're installing it in the server rooms at each school. And once completed, the backend stations complete, they'll be coordinating classroom installation probably sometime in November. So it's going to take a while. It's not a small project. It's a rather large one. But this was one of the safety concerns highlighted in the spring. Data and state reporting, we're currently working on the process of reconciling October 1st snapshot data. During the October 1st snapshot, we need to ensure that student enrollment, student demographic data, multilingual learner data, teacher course section, student rosters, and the free and reduced lunch flag, not because we have free and reduced lunch applications anymore, there's now a home survey or whatever it's called, all of that data has to be accurate and reported to the state. It's a very busy time of year. We are noticing or recognizing there are quite a few errors at the building level, and we have two data staff that are working and going back and forth with the principals and the secretaries to make sure that the data is being reported accurately. Student information system, data system update, so just like the on the infrastructure hardware side, on the data side, and again, we only have two people on the data side, and that doesn't include myself. We kicked off on October 7th the process of updating our student information system. So presently, we have Skyward, which is an older dated system. We've moved over to the Power School platform. We currently have several modules from Power School, but we're converting the vast majority of our systems over to this new platform. The conversion will take place over the next 12 months. It will result in significant improvements for our administrators, faculty, staff, students, parents, and guardians. We anticipate the following modules will go live for the 25-26 school year, and before I take them off, this directly relates to some of the feedback we received during public comment regarding report cards. We did do a communication survey about seven years ago in terms of preference of parents and how they receive their information. The vast majority received them electronically. That was their preference, which fed into the decision to do electronic report cards versus paper. But I think there's something to be said about how we've implemented it at the elementary level, and we probably should go back and revisit to make sure we're onboarding parents and they know it's available to them. But as a part of this process, and as a part of this process, the steps here requires to provide feedback to the student information systems vendor and review all processes in the district to see how each district, each school handles, for example, attendance. When is it entered? Is it the first period, the second period? So going through this process, it'll be very intense. It's going to require a lot of feedback on the part of the principals and secretaries It's going to require a lot of feedback on the part of the principals and secretaries to make sure we're giving accurate information to the vendor as we convert things. So the student information system, scheduling, attendance, grade book and report cards, special programs, online registration and parent portal, which we we have all of those, data analytics and state reporting. State reporting, we presently, data analytics is an enhanced tool for our administrators. It will also allow us to to hone in on chronically chronically absent students to see geographically the state already has a system, but we'll be able to feed directly from our system. It'll show heat maps of students and pockets within the community where, you know, absenteeism is a higher rate. And then we can kind of hone in, figure out, well, why is it in this particular area? M T S S data tracking, along with several others. The transition represents a major step forward in modernizing our data systems to provide better support. So and then in the process of this, we will be designing protocols to make sure that our data integrity is is accurate, because, as I've said on many occasions, we can even have all these new systems. If we don't build in the business rules, if you put poor data in, you're going to get poor data and poor results out. So that's it's all a good thing going through this because it'll make people kind of step back and ask the questions like, oh, well, why do we do that? Or how can we make it better? On the facility side, as of today, we have 106 work orders in the system. The facility staff have begun providing input on the facility's decisions for the New City Elementary School. So I think it was it was last week, we met with the design team from the new school to review exactly some of the internal items in the district. For example, in medically fragile classrooms, we're going to have a washer and a dryer versus making the staff go down the hall. We talked about the appropriate plumbing fixtures in the in the the rooms, and the facility staff got to directly weigh in on that. We talked about window dressings and certain other items, so as as all as as input. Moving on, as part of with the chairman's request, the HVAC heating systems update, it's going to be a regular item. Our HVAC vendor is continuing to make repairs at both middle schools. Last week, those of you in the community may have noticed, I know the staff did, that we had to displace a few of the parking spaces. A crane was on site to lift and install new HVAC units onto the roof of each location. As a reminder, while the HVAC controls at the middle schools were replaced on a brand new, the remaining equipment on the roofs, in the ceilings, and in the walls, that's all older. So we are making repairs as things break. Sometimes it takes a long time to get parts in. We just approved several more quotes. I think it was today, I met with Mr. Perrier to do some more additional repairs. At the high school career tech center campus, the HVAC system remains original to the the building. The district was notified recently, well, we had some outreach from the R I D, the School Building Authority, and Rhode Island Energy, the private company, that they are looking to provide an assessment at our high school to replace all of the controls there, similar to the they did here. But again, they wouldn't replace the overall equipment on the roof. It would just replace the controls in the rooms, which would be a better improvement. While it's not perfect, when when the systems are working, it gives our staff better control in the rooms for the temperature, so you can control the temperature within 10 degrees. It's not perfect, but it's way better than what we have now where the system is just runs. So when we turn the heat on, heat's on. And the only time it gets cool is if you shut it off or open a window or put on a fan, at least in in the winter. In terms of a plumbing update, just to speak to, because at the last meeting, it was not on the agenda, we did have a plumbing issue at the high school career tech center. I know you heard about it. It was in the news. So we did experience an issue. We've had a follow-up issue the next day in the new boys' and girls' locker room. Both were a result of inappropriate items being flushed down the plumbing. We've attempted to mitigate some of these concerns. We we try not to have bathrooms unsupervised. Speaking purely from a plumbing perspective and not necessarily from the safety concerns outlined earlier, we did implement e-hole pass, which allows faculty and staff to issue digital passes, allowing students to go to certain specific restrooms. We've installed cameras in the hallways at the high school and the career tech center. It's worth noting here, at the middle schools, we do have cameras in the hallways that are not working. We received a grant to rewire this building and the building next door, which you accepted. It was approved. The wiring was completed. However, the budget would would not cover at the state level as a safety concern to install cameras. So what we have to do here is we have to piecemeal the cameras. In this building, we had the S R O last year, Officer Velino identified key security issue spots that cameras needed to be replaced. It was based on their professional opinion, working with the administration. We identified those spots, and we're doing it piecemeal. We ordered so many cameras, then we ordered so many licenses, then we ordered so many of the software for the server, and we're doing it piecemeal. So that is not going to replace all the cameras. I don't recall off the top of my head. I think there's approximately 150 cameras, so 200 cameras between both buildings. We are using a hybrid system for our cameras. The old ones that are working are analog. The new ones are digital. So the new ones that are digital, as we're replacing them, they come online. But unless we identify a part of money to replace all the cameras at once, which I want to say was is going to be thousands of dollars, we have to pick and choose. And I certainly heard the feedback this evening about them not having them in the hallways. We can look at that next, although we right now, we're focusing on Villanova Middle School because we did this school last year for a few of them. We're going to do the next unless we identify a part of money, like I said. And then lastly, under the plumbing update, we have closed bathrooms bathrooms repeatedly due to vandalism and on being unable to monitor them due to staffing availability. Because of the feedback we received, and I received a phone call from the assistant principal at Villanova, it was my recommendation to follow the model here at Hamlet. And then with the feedback at the last meeting, and then I received an email on this, and I also received feedback from the principal, I did pursue exactly what the regulations are. So the I reached out to Dr. Jerome Locken, who's the director of the Department of Health, and he personally responded back and said there are no Department of Health specific regulations. I spoke to Dr. Joseph De Silva, who heads the School Building Authority, who indicated there are no specific regulations, but both pointed to contacting the local building official, which I did, which is Mr. Ted Isabella. And he indicated that we cannot close bathrooms. So I quite frankly feel like I I know there's an acknowledgement of safety concerns. I know there's acknowledgement of plumbing issues. And yes, this folder contains for the last three prior fiscal years, all of the plumbing expenses here in the district. So from a facilities perspective, it is a struggle. We spent almost $100,000. Safety and security, which is a partial areas under my purview, it is a concern about not being able to monitor the bathrooms. I sent a clarifying email this afternoon because similar to last time, I owned the decision and the information I shared. I shared an email this afternoon with what the building official stated. I informed Dr. McGee that we need to open the bathrooms. They're supposed to be accessible at all times. So I suggest maybe we have a conversation with the building official in the city to see if there's any more clarity in terms of what else we can do, because I've already received an email from the building principal at the high school saying he's concerned about being able to monitor all of them when they're open. Obviously, if they're broken and we can't repair them right away, we close them. We're not going to leave a bathroom that's broken open. But these are plumbing issues. This does not speak to any vandalism where they rip off the doors off of the stalls or smash the mirrors or rip off any of the trash cans. So that is the info I have to report under plumbing. Transportation, we continue to meet biweekly with dur I mean, bi-monthly with the term of school services. They have improved their times overall, but we still have some work to do on the routes arriving on time. And there there's some work to do there. They're presently working on some of the students that were transferred around for the October 1st move. I guess we shifted students on October 1st, and they're currently working through those. I believe they have just about everyone provided with busing, but I did send an email out to Coleman and Harris to see if they were able to complete that, and I'm pretty sure they're close, if not completely done. The transpass study, we've resumed phase two as it relates to the City Elementary School. They will better inform us, and we'll have more updates for the building committee, but ultimately, it impacts the overall district. But we did have, we're fortunate, the state is providing us a study and funding how transportation is going to work in the district once we've opened the new elementary school and we've reconfigured the two middle schools. I think Dr. McGee about in a we're going to form a I apologize, I can't think of the name. We had talked about for transportation.
Advisory.
Yes, yes, yep. This is going to be an advisory committee to provide input. It's not going to just be something we talked about this. This isn't going to be Dr. McGee and I've decided here's how people go. We're going to get parent input and community input and parents and and teachers and administrators so they they have some some say and some ownership as to how how the input goes for the transpass study. School safety, we continue to meet bi-monthly with the S R Os and Detective Kammer. We're now staffed with four S R Os. So if you recall, we were down one for a period of time due to the recent events, two. So traditionally, one's at the high school, one's at each middle school, and one roams. The one that's roaming has now been temporarily assigned to the high school for the next several weeks, just to make sure things are working okay there. That doesn't mean that they don't rotate out or wouldn't go to another school, but we are back to four. And lastly, Dr. McGee and had met with myself and the S R Os a few weeks back to continue to pursue Alice training here in the district. And we were tasked with, and we provided 150 open seats on P D day for Alice training. I don't have the exact numbers yet, but we did catch, this is the initial training everyone has to have, and we had quite a few new staff that joined us, new hires from last year and this year, they were able to avail themselves of the staff, the staff training. And then beyond that, we met and discussed ordering additional Alice books at the elementary level, and Dr. McGee was very explicit with the S R Os to get the training going with the principals, you know, when we have the all-school assemblies. So I believe the update that we had received was that the the high school has had scheduled one or is going to be scheduling one. Middle schools are both complete, and now we're waiting for the feedback from the elementary principals as to when they're going to be holding any type of assemblies. And then keep in mind, at the elementary level, we also give them, we give them an Alice book that the teachers read in the classrooms. I had sent an email out after talking with Dr. McGee and Dr. Holt to get a count of any classrooms that may be missing their book. And the principals, my understanding, that was a couple of weeks ago, the principals, I believe their last response came in today to Ms. Raymond, our curriculum director's secretary, and we'll be placing an order for anyone that that didn't get a book. So they should be receiving that to to read to the the elementary students. And that concludes my update, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Notorianni. Going back early, you talked about report cards. Did you say that you're going to be looking at this? Because if what we heard at Good and Welfare, there may be some parents have no computers, they don't have whatever. So are we thinking of sending out the report cards to some of the parents?
So I would like to clarify the report card and the parent portal because I'm not sure, you know, similar, so I'm just not sure what messaging is going to the staff. So I can tell you, we modeled our program after like Providence and Cranston and other districts, similar in nature to us, where we moved from a a printed report card to an electronic report card. And we did a survey. I worked with Dr. McGee, and Dr. McGee did a survey. As a matter of fact, I pulled it up, and it there was a lot of feedback about how parents hear, and most of it, or the majority of parents indicated they liked the electronic communication. So but again, that was several years back. I think we need to look at what is being communicated out to our staff. So for example, we're we're an electronic district. There's a parent portal. It provides parents not just information on their report card or their progress notes. It allows a parent to check to see if your child's attended school today. It allows you to check to see if there's any type of discipline or conduct reports in there. Allows you to check any progress notes. And I I think there's a combination of things that need to occur. We need to do a better job educating our parents that this is available to them. I would say particularly at the elementary level. I think it all too often, it's it's easily encouraged that we give a paper report card there, and I can't say for 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 a fact that we're doing it with fidelity at that level. I've I've heard that some buildings are still printing them on paper. I don't know. I'd have to look into all of that. But I can tell you, the model was electronic, with the exception that if a parent requests a a printed report card, we will give it, but the parent has to request it from the principal. It can't just be a carte blanche request from a classroom or or from to say, we want all paper report cards. And we modeled this after what other districts did. It was successful in other districts. My children went through the Cranston schools. I had a niece went through the Providence schools. They received them electronically. I've heard the concerns about people don't have access to a laptop, per se. The parent portal does does load up on on an iPhone. I've looked at research on the fact that parents, many parents and many of the younger generation parents do everything on this, and they don't use a laptop at all. So I can't really speak specifically say to the examples that were presented this evening. I think we can go back and look at it electronically to see, is this still something we would like to pursue? Certainly, we could maybe do a better job at the at the building level communicating out what options are available to parents. I know every year, we send in the data department directions out because the school secretaries are responsible and charged at the elementary level with making sure parents know where they can get their parent portal info, how they log in, how a parent password is reset. So I think we need to revisit the process on that. And ultimately, if we come to the conclusion that 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 parents are just not happy with it, or or there's some significant feedback, which I've not heard at from my level, so I don't know if the teachers communicate into the principals or and or if they're not, or if from the air of the principals communicating up, I've not heard of a concern. I've heard of one building that traditionally wanted continue printing paper report cards. We can certainly go back to that. I'm not, I can tell you, the trend is the opposite to go electronic.
I I I'm not suggesting we go, we change our approach. I'm just saying for those parents, obviously, if that gentleman was correct, and there are parents that, one, don't have a computer, they're not going to get any anything online or anything, and they probably need something else. But like you said, it should be coming from the buildings, from the the principals in the buildings to say, I've got X parents that need report cards.
I I would suggest has has it been reported to the principal? And has the principal notified the parent that they are entitled to have a printed report card? I think that would be a good first step. I think we should, I can refresh everyone's memory. Listen, a lot of things when we implemented this, we went through a pandemic. So let's be fair. I think we can refresh everyone's recollection, and for anyone new who may have joined us since then, say, okay, here's how we do it here, and here's what you need to offer to the parents. I can tell you that if a if a parent, if there's a concern because it's not in English, I I will tell you, see here right now, is probably a few things to to maybe not say right now, but maybe tomorrow, because we we offer them in in multiple languages. As a matter of fact, most recently, aside from our systems and convert things, we've purposely are looking to implement attendance letters in multiple languages immediately off the bat. You don't have to request to have it translated, it will come out that way. And I think, speaking to overall, what I I alluded to earlier with Power School is, I think the system's going to be a new improvement because the process to convert asks many questions. It's it's purposeful to make you start thinking. And 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 I I think unfortunately, a misconception might be is is from the district's perspective out there in the buildings is that it's not for me just to be thinking about it, being responsible I T or or the superintendent or the directors. The questions are going to be shared at the building level with guidance. I want to make sure they have input. Secretaries have input. So it gets them thinking, how do we do things? And oh, all right, you know, I'm hearing from parents that the report card, you know, we like it in paper, or we can't get to it this way, or it doesn't work well on my phone. Those are all things we can send back to Power School and say, how do we address it? How do other districts do it? Or maybe not, and you ask for a paper report card, and we print them out.
Right. Agreed. Any other thoughts? On this?
I just have one question. Don't are we not one to one on Chromebooks anymore?
Mrs. Kepiscus, so that 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 a few years back, what was was would have been my response, because this question has come up in the past, and I've I've explained in the past, yes, we are. Unfortunately, here at the middle school level, due to the extensive amount of damage and the inability to implement some accountability, the Chromebooks are not allowed to leave these buildings anymore. So so in the past, yes, that conversation occurred, and we would say, well, students were bringing back and forth. It was it was one of the the positives, if you will, to the pandemic. But now, elementary and middle school Chromebooks are not allowed to leave due to the the damages that we've incurred. So it doesn't really apply at at that level. But I I would remind the committee that we implemented electronic report cards before we had Chromebooks that went home, based on the communication survey and the feedback that we received. I really think it's a twofold approach. I think we need to gather more information. And I think we also need to make sure the information that we've already established in our practice is is effectively communicated to our constituents, meaning our parents, to our constituents, meaning our parents, guardians, teachers, and administrators.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, I do have some information that might change your guys' decision on this, as a student, both of us. Again, the mandate say, parents don't have like computers and stuff, I do agree with you, they can check their phones, but a lot of people that I know personally and just around the school, they don't have their parents having their logins. If you guys do want to continue with like online, I would say send out like emails to the parents about their students' logins, because a lot of parents don't even know they can access that. And then for the papers, me personally, I got papers, and then we also, I was like during that transition, I feel like paper copies were just a lot more for our parents, because they are old-school, so they just, they just understand those a lot more better than a computer would or a phone. They like try zooming in, take them to something different. It just, it's just, every person is different. Obviously, the elementary schoolers, their parents might be like younger, so they might be able to like work with that stuff a lot easier, but my parents didn't really have an easy time with that. And another thing, I might be getting a lot of people in trouble, I'm not saying any names, but I do, I have seen people change and like edit their grades on Skyward, where they just take a simple screenshot of their grades and just like edit it and then show their parents another grade. If they had, for example, like 68, they can change the six, cross it out, and turn it into a nine. So I have, I've actually seen this in like person, so I would just like to bring that up. I'm not trying to get anyone in trouble, but I have seen this happen. So that might change your, like, yeah.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate your feedback, and I, I think, again, that speaks to, we, we, I think we need to revisit with our administrators, because I, I will, I, I definitely appreciate it, and no one's going to get in trouble for changing any grades.
Good job for Kama, my goodness.
That was, that was good. But this would, this speaks to, to making sure our administrators know what's available. Our parents get their own sep, so, so I have children, and I, I, they, I don't know what they may or may not have done or pulled over on me or my wife. But all of our parents have their own login, and they, and they don't need to rely on the student login, and the documentation I was referring to earlier, that our elementary schools are supposed to be that, that base level to get that info out, they're supposed to be expressing that in the very beginning, when you're a new parent and you come here, we give it to you in your registration packet, and then it's supposed to be reinforced at the elementary level, that you have your own username and password as a parent, you don't need to rely on, on your, on your, your child, your student's password, potentially because, you know, that may or may not be occurring where you've manipulated your grade in your own portal or your own screenshot because of, of things that may or may not occur. So I, again, I, I want to say we, we could need to investigate again. I do think we need to sit with our, particularly our elementary principals. I'm going to say the middle school and high school are much more advanced with the technology and guidance handle it, but I think at the elementary level, they're going to have to revisit with their secretaries to make sure that messaging's getting out. I don't know yet this year, and I want to be fair, it's only, only October and the school just started. I suspect they, if they already haven't, they're probably in the next couple of weeks going to share out the memo that I shared last year and the year before about where you go as a parent to get to the parent portal and how you log in. And if you need help, it lists out the name of the school, and it explicitly states, talk to the school secretary. And Amanda Reina, our data specialist, being a former elementary secretary, created screenshots so that they have support to provide to the parents, so the parents aren't all calling McPhee, or Dr. McGee for that matter, but rather they're calling the schools to make sure they can get the info.
Let me ask you, do, are we sure all the parents are getting packages, especially when we think of attendance, or, or parents that are not really invested in their children's education? Are we sure all the parents are getting all this information in their packages? I'm not, I'm just, it's a rhetorical, I hope.
I think, Mr. Borche, we're going to have a tech subcommittee very soon to talk about the communicate, electronic communications here in the district, and the importance of having parent contact info correct in Skyward and getting it from our parents, and making sure emergency contact and all the infos in there. That's something we go through at the beginning every year, it's a normal thing here, and I think that we, we can talk through all that and do a report out at, at the next meeting. Because you're right, if we, if we, if we didn't get the info, if I don't have your email address, I can't share the info. If I have your email address, but the secretary hasn't entered it into Skyward, you're not going to get the email to get the info to know where you can get student info, and I think-
I got no computer, and I, and I got a phone that I don't know how to use it, but I got no computer, so how am I getting information? I may need a hard copy packet, and then I get a big packet, I may not even look at it.
I can tell you this, it's not scientific, but the vast majority of our enrollments are electronic, so that tells me they have access somewhere or somehow. I think we need to look into it further.
Okay.
I, I have a suggestion, in addition to everything that's been discussed, maybe we send out another survey to families about communication. The last one, Ms. Nutarianni's correct, was sent out a while ago. We, we sat down, we put it together. I think if we send out another one, that just, isn't just limited to just that, but it includes that, I think we'll get some updated information from our families, and I think that will help us as we move forward.
I agree.
Anything else?
I also think you have to consider, I, I mean, maybe I'm just jaded at this point, but that could be a really easy knee-jerk reaction of a parent to a teacher informing them, your child is failing. What do you mean you're failing? You don't look at Skyward? What's Skyward? Really easy to shift the blame, that I knew my kid was failing, but I don't want to talk about it, so I don't know what Skyward is. And I don't mean to sound jaded, but as Chair of the CILAC, I'm seeing huge parental apathy here, and I, I'm seeing it across the board.
You're preaching to the choir. I, I think that if, if, again, that's, that's one thing, I don't, I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily saying we base on, we base what we do on just that survey, but I think it's important to hear from what our families are thinking, because some, some will do that, but I, I would like to think that the vast majority of them, while they may not attend some, some meetings, and they should, I, I want to make it as, as, as accessible to them as possible without spoon-feeding them, but I also want to give them an opportunity to, to hear what they have to say.
Anyone else?
Sorry, sorry to cut you off. I know you guys are, that's a good idea to send out to parents, but I am, like, when he was talking about report cards, I was very like, like agreeing with him, just because like, even if my, even if like my parents did have the stuff and whatever, I feel like that physical signature that we used to have when we were kids was just peak, because we can't just forge our parents' signatures, and even if we did, they've had several copies of where they have seen my parents' signature, so they do know what my parents' signature looks like. Me personally, I can't even do my own signature, so I won't be making my parents' signature. So I do think you guys should also ask students whether they do want online or physical, because me personally, knowing Natalie as well, we both would like papers back, and we're just students. I feel like papers would just bring a lot more like respect and like discipline to this in general, because I feel like everyone's just lying about it and just, you, like you said, parents are just not taking like the responsibility they should be. So if this parent is missing and the student is missing, it's not going to work out. One of them has to be there, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just, just to go, just to go off of what she's saying about the signature, nowadays, kids don't know how to write cursive, so I don't think it would be a problem with them trying to forge their parents' signature, because a lot of students unfortunately don't know how to write in cursive, so that, I don't see them forging their parents' signature on their, their report cards if we were to go back to paper, paper copies.
And even if they did, parents who care could cross-reference it to the electronic report card available on Skyward or whatever the new Skyward is.
True.
The majority of the parents, it'll be good. For some, it won't be, but I think, you know, talking to students is not a bad idea as well, as part, maybe that survey should go to the students as well. Why not? Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the technology facilities update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa, all in favor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have one item in new business. I'll make a motion to discuss approved bid 26-12 MLL Professional Development and District Support Services. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, Mr. Perrier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Front of the school committee is bid 26-12 multilingual, lingual, I can't speak, multilingual learner professional development and district support services. This is going to be funded by Title III funding. We had 11 vendors for this bid, and by the way, Mr. Chairman, this is the missing bid. This is why we missed a number last week, this one was held back. It is finalized and compiled now. We did have 11 vendors respond. The winning bid was New England Base Camp at 45, $45,080.
And exactly what will this service provide?
This service will provide job-embedded coaching for our teachers as well as books, clubs for our staff in elementary and secondary levels. They're also going to be providing office hours so teachers can go work with them throughout the school day or after school. So there's a lot of components to this bid.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borche?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
We have no other items on our agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:20 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.